All right, we're gonna settle in. Start punctually. Start with a quick roll call. I'm gonna go from that end so we can finish with our new, not quite yet sworn in student representative.
Kate O'Connor, board secretary.
Scott Rissman, board member.
Brian Barrow, school board.
Wes Holden, superintendent.
Jesse Tyler, school board.
Ed Anderson, school board.
Jim Morelli, school board.
Les Manners, student board representative.
We'll make formal just a moment here. If you could stand for the pledge of allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't, sorry. Got excited, we have a new rep suddenly and I missed out on some fairly important people.
Jody Burden, principal, son of a principal. Me, you, me, assistant principal, son of a high school.
Sean Moynihan, principal, son of a high school.
All right.
Take two, see two, action. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A considered republic, which is sent us. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So, some hard news for the community of teachers. Just wanna take a moment of silence for Terry Gears' mother, Deborah, unfortunately passed. Thanks. We wish Terry and her family the best with our transition. So, we are on to approval of the board meeting minutes. So, we have the meetings, the minutes from the May 3rd school board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the May 3rd meeting?
Motion to approve the May 3rd school board meeting, the May 3rd in public as well as the May 17th.
Okay. And the motion by Ed, do I have a second?
A second motion?
So, second for the May 3rd school board meeting and the facility meeting. Second of the, I'm sorry about that. Sorry, I had to order here. Let me restate that clearly for the record. Ed had motioned and put the second for the May 3rd board meeting and then the non-public. I need a motion for the facility meeting notes as well. Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The only problem is someone's haven't attended the 17th, so when you-
I was trying to keep them separate.
Yeah, when you go to ask for a vote, you're gonna have to separate those two.
I started out with a single one, I'm gonna go back to it unless somebody gives me a timeout here. So, let's do, let's get the do-overs so we have the process correct. So, I'm looking forward, just the May 3rd school board meeting. Motion?
Motion to accept the May 3rd school board.
Okay. Second.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Jim. Separately, the notes from the non-public board meeting on May 3rd. Motion?
I'll make a motion for the non-public school board meeting, May 3rd.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Second by Brian. And coming around third, minutes of the May 17th SES facility meeting. I'll motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, sir. All right. Agenda review.
We have to vote.
I'm sorry, I'm starting a, I had a slight incident with a wardrobe malfunction right before the meeting and I haven't been the same since. So, give me a second to get started. I acknowledge a little bit of a lumpy start, I own that, but I'll come back around. So, all in favor, approval of the school board meeting, non-public and facility meeting notes. Any opposed? No abstention. Now, we're back on track.
Do you need abstentions if we weren't at the facilities meetings?
So, Kate, can I, can I just, sorry. Little help on the committee minutes? Because the committee is a byproduct of the board, which only has two members, so you don't have a quorum. So, you would never actually get full approval. So, you're just accepting-
Usually the committee themselves will be the ones that will actually approve their own minutes. You wouldn't get-
And you're just accepting that as a board.
You're just accepting that as a board.
All right. So, we're accepting the facility meeting. Have you ever had a meeting get away from you, kids? This is modeling, but I'm also gonna show you recovery, quick recovery. So, with great intent of moving us forward on a smoother ride down this road. Did you have anything under agenda review that you wanted to make sure that-
I think the student representative is in the radar.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tuck Blaze in in just a minute. So, with respect to good attendance tonight, we're gonna move to the next item, which is our public forum. If you wanna step to the mic and introduce yourself.
I don't see a mic.
No, no, I have a mic tonight, sorry.
I'll talk a lot.
Okay. Project so we can all hear.
Jan Eddencourt, I have a couple of questions. I'd like to inquire about the timetable for contract negotiations and wondering if the process has started. And I hope that either on the last agenda or today's agenda, you would be talking about the open negotiations that, at this meeting. I asked Jesse if we would be talking about it and he said we would, so I hope that it will come up at this meeting. My hope is that the board won't ignore the March vote, which was two to one. It wasn't a binding warrant article, but it was a message or it was a significant two to one vote in favor of that. And I would hope that the board would want to discuss that, not ignore what the taxpayers had to say. My experience when I was on the board about contract negotiation was less than transparent. And I think that the taxpayers deserve to have more transparency. And I'm hoping that you all will respect that. And I took a workshop by the New Hampshire School Board Association on negotiations. And they explained how important it is for you to have a negotiator, both sides, so that both sides are dealing. It's difficult and a lot of school board members don't have the experience. And so, I think for the taxpayers, I think it's, the open transparency is important. I hope that you address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. We are on to the presentation from Destination Imagination.
We call our own children.
There are little, your own children.
Okay, okay.
We're here tonight, Wesley and I are here tonight to, with fifth grade teachers, for those of you that don't know. We've been coaching DI teams for six years. And so, here represent two of our, our two DI teams this year that went through the whole DI process. And they'll tell you a little bit about it. And just came back from a global competition in Tennessee.
So, we just wanted to explain a little bit. People might have heard a little bit about the main challenge and the instant challenge. And the beginning of the year, the teams get together. This is a representation, not all of the kids could come, but this is most of them. And they had to pick if they wanted a scientific, a technical, engineering, fine arts, improv, or service learning. That's for their main challenge that they can spend as much time as they want on. And they hash it out and try to decide, which is always tricky and trying to figure out. Some teams get one that they always love and keep going. Sometimes you try different ones each year. And we, one team, one team that we had, the fine arts challenge, and one did the service learning.
Okay, so, the DI process, we start out with a pretty consistent meetings every Friday. For the younger kids who are at the elementary school, they do get to meet every single Friday after school. But for the middle school team, we try to meet as much as possible. But we do have sports and the school play and other things that can sometimes get in the way of our meetings. And as it gets closer to the regional competition, we try to meet more and more of the younger kids. They'll come in at recess or after school at their homework club. We also do dawn to dusk, which is where we come in at nine, our dawn. We stay until five or six at night, which is-
Or I think that was like nine or 10, then that's one of them.
Yeah, oh, that night, that night was a long time. And that's over Christmas break, we'll do a day or two, and then over February break, we'll do a day or two. And we put hours and hours into all of our props and costumes and try to make it up very nicely.
The first step was the regional tournament. There was four regional tournaments and with over 1,800 candidates.
And the regional tournament is in New Hampshire. And these are some of the schools, these are the schools that are represented, represented in our tournament. But there are four different tournaments. And as you can see from the schools, these are big schools, small schools, homeschool situations. Some, you know, families do DI and it's not even affiliated with a school. So, but these are the communities that are represented in our tournament in Swansea.
We did project outreach, which is the community service challenge. We did three projects with seniors in our community and we won.
So, we, the middle school team competed in the fine arts challenge. And we created a medieval story, complete with a purple marionette dragon, and we also won.
The top 120 teams from around the state competed at state. Both of our teams won first place and became part of the 3016, 36 teams representing New Hampshire at the finals.
At the global finals competition, there are 1,500 teams, nearly, competing from 18 different countries and 45 different states. And that can be anywhere from 8,000 to even over 9,000 kids there.
We have a little video to give you the scope of that.
This is opening steroids. And all those little lines of people.
I don't need to see my point. Get a close up of our face.
For the Sunapee Central Elementary School team, it was our first time competing at globals. And we won 20th place out of 86 teams. And it was one of the most things I've ever done in my entire life.
Thank you.
It's okay. Sorry.
Okay. So, for the middle school team, this happens to be our fifth time going to global finals of our six years participating in DI. And we placed fifth this year. And we also won the Renaissance Award for our outstanding design of turrets, a working drawbridge backdrop, and a purple marionette dragon.
And the horse wasn't too shy.
So, we had a lot of fun at globals and we also got time to do activities. One of our favorites was the geysers, where it was the coolest way to calm down on a very hot day. It was very fun. Another thing that we did is we did have to check in on our props to see if they had made the trip safely and called me. And so, we just had to check that out, if they were safe or if something happened to them. We also, we did a lot of pin trading, that was really fun. Where we meet other people from different states or countries and we pin traded with them. And they had different pins from different places along the world. And we just pin traded, see if someone wanted, you know, pinjelly. So, we went to eat out a lot in different places. One place was the Waffle House.
It loves a waffle house.
The duct tape ball was really fun. We performed our main challenge and that went pretty fun, that went pretty well. We didn't do that bad, I guess, 28 percent of that, 87. We had our instant challenge, which went pretty well. We got, we got 65 points out of 100. We had different camps, which were stage combat, magic, and hip hop dance party. Boy, that, that was wow. And then we got, what we were drafting, the older kids, which they did was, I'm guessing, fun.
Yeah. That's quite an actual, no, yeah.
All right, I'm here up now. Thank you so much for supporting our teams over the past six years. We can't wait for next year. Are there any questions?
That's all we have. Just trying to keep it quick. Yeah, any questions on DI or for any of the kids that have participated in globals? And they can tell you a little bit more about the projects if you'd like or what they did this year.
Are you all coming back next year really good?
Yes.
A lot of people.
How many teams did the school have?
We had five teams this year between the middle school, elementary school. And we had a rising stars team. And that's a team of kindergarten to second grade kids. And that's more of like a feeder, they don't compete, it's a feeder team. They do a project, they present it, they get feedback, they do an instant challenge, they get feedback, but it's not a competition. So, that sounds fun. So, we had one of those, two elementary and two middle school.
We've had, along, in the last six years, we've had a team from the high school represented too. But it gets harder as the kids get older, for them to find time with all their activities and their academics to do something else. And-
Because really, to do it well, it, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours go into the project.
And they both, both teams did very well.
Can I just say one thing? I had the honor coming this year under five years. The amount of effort you two put in was phenomenal. It's one thing to say that the kids worked hard at it, but every day they're there, you guys are there as well. You're not there alone, so the amount of effort you two and Megan did as well on this trip to keep the kids watched and entertained and move them around and organized. Oh, my gosh, the organization. It's like herding cats.
It was fun. We love it.
Just phenomenal. Thank you so much for making this a, a little-
So, I wanted to ask all of us, because I know when I ask my boss sometimes. Do you feel that DI and all of the things that you learn in DI helps with organization and doing things at school, like problem solving and all of that?
Yes, I definitely feel that it helps you know how to budget your time and to, what to work on. Because I know that sometimes what your project that you're working on in DI, like a certain part of it, like building a turret. If you build the frame, then someone else might have to paper mache, but they can't start their project till you finish your project. And that goes along with school, you need to know, I have to get this homework assignment done and this project done before I can start working on these, because they do later. And so, very, it's very helpful and it's a wonderful program to go through.
One of the things along that, those lines, that I've seen, some of these kids we've had since they were in third grade. And because, the nature of the program is that you, we can give of our time as coaches, we can get them resources that they need, but we can't give them ideas. We can't interfere in any way, which is sometimes difficult for adults not to interfere, but we've gotten much better at it. But for them, it really pushes kids at a very early age to learn how to problem solve. But also learn how to go to a hardware store and talk to an adult about what would be the best way to get something or make something. And just the growth we've seen in kids being able to advocate for themselves, problem solve for themselves, and figure out what they need to do has been easy.
There's also a lot of learning involved when you go to global finals. Because with the 1,500 teams there and the seven different challenges, there's so much you can learn and experience. Like, I know my first year, our backdrop, it was a PVC pipe with a sheet hanging down and we painted it. This year, it was a three-piece castle with two turrets. The outside was stone with vines on them, but when you put them together on the inside, it was a throne room. And we also made a working drawbridge, where you turn a crank, it goes down.
Two seconds.
Yeah, you can see it in the back there. And the entire backdrop, it's covered in paper mache balloons to a click rock, which was kind of a pain to make, but it was worth it. And we definitely wouldn't make costumes like this or drugs like this our first year. And maybe without going to roll files, we-
You wouldn't even know.
We wouldn't even know how to push ourselves further and try new things. So, it just really helps with building your creativity, problem solving, pretty much any skill you would need in the future.
For DI, it was my first year even making it to states. And it was just amazing that I got to go to globals and it was so fun. And I learned to organize a lot of things, because I do a few extracurricular activities. And I think from DI, I've learned a lot about how to organize things and, and DI is what I do. The coach is making me that.
Just a quick comment. I think when we, like, two, four, five, five years ago, six years ago now, DI had kind of faded away. And I just wanna give credit to the team that's been five times, because you have re-energized this program. And I think, you know, because you accept your success, your enthusiasm, healthy, your coaches, you have just put so much more emphasis in kids wanting to be involved. They see your success, they see your excitement, they see the things that you do and that's come out of these programs. And it has revitalized, revitalized these programs. Well, I believe last year we even had two rising star teams, I believe, take place a little-
Yeah, we, yeah, we, and we've had, each year, it's kind of different how many kids wanted to do it, but we've had more and more. And really, six years ago when we started, Jody had come, that was when she started, and we really hadn't heard about it. And she brought it to the school and this is such a neat idea and it's, you know, several kids now have.
So, just thank you guys for that, that means a lot.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great, great to see, great to hear about. And I was, I haven't lived in town in three years yet, so there's still some new things. And I didn't realize, when we were talking about it last year, I didn't realize, I didn't appreciate the scale of, you know, thousands of students there competing. So, extra pride to see us placing so well. Want to tuck in an addition before we get to the school updates, because we need them to be on the board to give a student. So, I wanted to, looking for a motion to add Blaze O'Meara as student rep to our school board. To make it official, can I get a?
I'll make a motion to add Blaze as a student rep.
Excellent, thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll have a second.
All right, Jim. All in favor?
All right.
Unanimous? All right. Blaze, welcome to school board. Thanks for stepping up, we appreciate it. And you get to start with the student update. Things you want to hear about, how the students are doing, and things you want to share from the student perspective.
All right. So, well, I would start with, for this, it's kind of like an overall update of the whole year. Seeing as I, nothing, really much is happening at this point in the year. The seniors are just excited to graduate and get out of here. But, so, as an overall kind of view of the year, there's been a, I wanna start with clubs. There's been a multitude of clubs added to SMHS, such as the B Club, the Mountain Viking Club, and the recently added LGVT Straight Alliance Club. And I think that these clubs are great and they've seen great attendance by students. And it's certainly adding a more diverse environment to Sunapee, which is predominantly just a small rural town. So, it's great to see that. As for sports this year, we lost seniors last year. It's been a rebuilding year. But there's definitely promise in the younger grades, hoping that we can go further in playoffs in the future years. And with help from Mr. Moynihan, certainly the drama department has seen a lot more love this year. I don't know who passed the addition of a new stage for Sunapee High School, but the drama, or theater kids who, who've done the place for years are super appreciative of that. And also of the school Broadway trip that was offered to everybody this past March, right, Mr. Moynihan?
Yes.
And as for academics, we're still, it's still a huge, it's still a very rigorous, intense academic environment that the students are in. And I wanna say almost half of all juniors and seniors were taking some advanced placement course this year. Maybe even one or two, which is very great to see. And what I'm excited for most next year, as like a new curriculum adds to the school and some other kids are excited as well, is for a new STEAM class. Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Mathematics, which will be community-based art, where students will be co-teached by Mr. Romain, who's the art teacher here, and Ms. LaChan, who's the industrial arts teacher here. And we'll be doing community-based projects for the school and the harbor and just the whole community.
Great. Thank you very much. Welcome to board. All right, moving on to school updates for the elementary school, please.
Last Thursday night, we had our student showcase, which incorporates a lot of different events into one night to streamline it for families. So, we had math games, our student art show, ice skating, and our band and chorus concerts. And we wanna thank Mrs. Willis, Mrs. Scarr, Mrs. Bailey, and Mrs. Doyle for coordinating all of that and working with our students to help them share their gifts. And if you didn't go and have a chance, the art show's still up, comes through all through the school, there's some really cool, some really cool things that the students have done. And we have lots of events coming up in the last couple of weeks of school. We have deer graduation for fifth grade tomorrow, several field trips to the Seco Science Center, our whale watch, Vermont Institute of Natural Science. Our fourth grade Asia Expo taking place at the Media Center on Monday, June 18th at 9:00 AM. Hope that's welcome if you come to that. Field day on June 20th, and then our fifth grade celebration on June 21st at 9:00 AM.
Great, thank you. Lots going on. The middle and high school update, please.
So, this is the time of year where most folks see us and say, oh, it's the school year winding down. The school doesn't wind down. We wind up and then just throw the bread. So, in that vein, we've had a lot-
So in that vein, we've had a lot going on in the past month. So we had our spring elective, which is a week for our middle school students who have some intensive studies. So we had a number of, a majority of our eighth graders went to Gettysburg to culminate their study about the Civil War. We had a spring elective about karate. We had another called Believe It or Not, where students look at being discerning media consumers. And then the majority of our sixth and seventh graders participated in one called Get Your Sess for Centennial on. And it was a collaborative effort of about eleven staff members, who, some of whom teach some high school classes during the day, but then took on an extra session of this spring elective, and then others who were doing it all day long and did a number of activities around the history of Sunapee, so the students had that perspective of in this two-hundred-and-fifty years, significant events, they did walking tours of important places. Hopefully, most of you have seen the installment that they created that's on the bank by the elementary school that was built in the shop that week, the geese designed and painted and, so a lot of STEAM activities incorporated into it and a lot of student awareness just about our own local history and helping to launch that special time this August. The Nuandin Rotary Club has been incredibly generous and recently at a breakfast awarded scholarships to ten of our seniors. And we'll be hearing at graduation about a number of other local scholarships for our seniors. It's amazing how much the local community contributes. We've had our spring concert and our art show that were very well attended. We had students participate in a Special Olympics torch on May 31st along with the elementary school students. Blaze mentioned our bike club, we also recently got a donation of several bikes, tools, equipment that have given the bike club a great boost. We have about fifteen students participating on any given night, there might be six or seven on a particular ride, but it's nice to hit interests of different students. Our service club recently went and painted with Sunapee seniors at delivery, so they had a painting event connecting different citizens. And ice speaking is coming up tomorrow night. And for the rest of the calendar of events coming up, they're certainly on our website and we have graduation, obviously, on the fifteenth.
Quite a wind-up. Quite a wind-up.
That's a, yeah, that's a, I wish I could say that was all of it, there's a lot of other things. Well, about Blaze, Blaze is a junior, he's a member of the principal's advisory and in some of the events he spoke about, the principal's advisory really is very instrumental, I believe, in just being able to say, where are the things we need to work? You know, I would use the, some of the drama equipment we've bought or the Broadway play, for instance, those are things that students have earmarked money for or events or activities that they feel are accessible to everybody. So Blaze has a lot of experience in working through, not only through the principal's advisory, but working with a wide set of students to try to make some of these really neat things that happen, you know, are very much at least, if not student-led, certainly, you know, largely student-driven. Blaze has a lot of experience with that.
That's great. Yeah, he came to interview with Russ and I and we were thinking more towards September and he wanted to contribute, so it's nice to have him step up and do that. All right, thanks for the updates. Nice to hear some of the many, many things going on, will be going on in the next couple of weeks. Next is Ross, superintendent update, please.
Again, just lots of great things going on, keeping us busy during the day, keeping us busy during the night and back in the morning and try to help again, so it's a great, exciting time, actually. I'm going to hand you out, I'm going to do my best to get you through this as quickly and as painlessly as possible. Last Friday, in a meeting with the Commission of Education, he announced that he would like school boards to sign off on general insurances. General insurances are set by the federal government for anybody in this kind of school district that's received federal grants. So this isn't a mandate from the federal government, it's not a mandate from our legislature, this is something that the Commission of Education has imposed upon us. As a building local principal and superintendent, I have wrote over general insurances for twenty-five years and they've always been signed by the superintendent and they're just basically stating that these are the things that we will make sure that we do. In other words, we're getting federal money, we're not going to be discriminating against anybody, we're going to share that money equally across our students and teachers. And there are a lot of things in there based upon Sunapee's not receiving a whole lot of federal money, we don't even qualify under those insurances. Why are you getting them tonight? It's because I'm giving them an opportunity to read them over, not necessarily here and now, but when you have it at your leisure and if you had questions on them, please get back to me. At the end of the night tonight, Jesse, what I'm going to ask you to do is sign this document because in July I'm going to need to put our general insurances sign-off in so that I can follow our grant to stop receiving our money. We don't have an opportunity to other do that other than tonight. Again, you entrust me to be your superintendent, you've entrusted me the last six years to sign these insurances, I've done them for a number of years before that. This is, again, is just a step that the Commission of Education has inserted himself into and you into. So I just ask that you, again, take it, read it at your leisure, if you have questions, get back to me and then Jesse, you'll bring it up later on tonight.
Yeah, it's the same. So just to confirm my understanding of these, it's elevating what is, in the past has been capped at.
The comment from the Commission was, this puts, gives the board a little skin in the game.
Right.
Are the insurances any different than what you have signed? They're the same.
My last piece, just a quick thank you from Brian Traynor. Brian runs the Sunapee Senior Group and I know two years ago they were trying to get into a junior in the wintertime to do some walking, we weren't able to accommodate that for a few different reasons. We were able to accommodate that this year and Brian's down there. I think they go on Wednesdays and when Bonnie's on her prep time, they go to a bunch of seniors anywhere between, I guess, eight to twelve seniors and they do about an hour of walk. So just a nice thank you note you have along with that.
Yeah, I sent a nice note, it's great we're able to share the facility. All right, thank you. Moving on to action items. First one is approve, hiring a proposed kindergarten teacher and that is Olivia Vandenburgh. So I need a motion to approve the hiring of Olivia Vandenburgh for kindergarten.
Make a motion that we approve the hiring of Amanda as presented.
Thank you.
Sorry, Olivia, is it Olivia?
Olivia.
Pardon me, Olivia.
Olivia Vandenburgh. Brian, motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Thank you. I moved the next one up for Blaze so we could have him report out, so we've already covered that and approved it. Moving to the next action item, I'm looking for a motion to approve the spending of up to fifteen thousand dollars from the Sunapee Central School Facility Capital Reserve Account for continued work from Aireman on the development of the SCES Building Renovation Edition Planning Process. So just to speak to that directly, this is approval to spend up to, there's not, we have, from our prior investment, we have funds that we're working off of, we want to keep the process moving and go follow proper procedures, so this is not a definite spend, this is approval to spend it if it's needed. Any questions from the board or the non-facilities team around that? So it's just, it gives us that window if needed. So I'm looking for the motion for that fifteen thousand dollars, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the spending of up to fifteen thousand dollars out of the SCES Facilities Capital Reserve Account.
It's a bit of a mouthful. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Second from Scott. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you. Next action item is approve the proposed 2018-2019 meal prices. And just so I can read that out for the folks who watched the video, the recommendation is to move to approve the price, breakfast from a dollar sixty-five to a dollar seventy and lunch from two dollars and eighty-five cents to two dollars and ninety cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve those 2018-19 meal prices.
Okay, thank you Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Brian's second and all in favor, please?
Aye.
Do you want to?
I just want to review the discussion.
Say it again.
Is there a second discussion? You're missing discussion.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I didn't pause for discussion. Yeah, sorry, I didn't see a nudge for it, so I'll go, I'll add discussion as a formal opportunity, I apologize if I'm moving us too quickly, thanks for the nudge. So the next action item is the, approve the proposed 2018-2019 coaches. I'm not going to list them all out, they're in the public document, there's a long list.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 ranking of coaches.
Okay. Thank you Ed, do I have a second for discussion?
I'll start in the motion.
All right, thank you Scott. Any discussion?
Is there a particular reason just we're doing all of it once? Is there, we used to do them just before the season would start typically?
Two years ago I tried to do all at once and we tried, but we had a lot of open positions at that time. This year, I think, remember our spring coaches, we kind of got caught a little behind the eight ball. So given that we got caught behind the eight ball, it was fresh on my mind, I said, Tom, if you have all the coaches ready, if we know who's coming back and you please give them to me, let's do that. Also, some of our coaches work with our teams over the summertime.
Great. And if there is a change, then they'll come back before the season starts to, because I like those changes.
That's good, but honestly, you have a contract.
Okay, I just know that it's tough with folks, schedules change and things change and life gets in the way. Okay.
All right, so motion seconded by, motion by Ed, seconded by Scott, all in favor for the proposed coaches, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And next action item, approve the superintendent to hire certified faculty over the summer. So for folks just watching, that's, we're not going to have a meeting again, school board meeting until September, so we want to give the superintendent support to proceed over the summer as staff, staffing can change. So we'll go, motion seconded for discussion. Question?
I'll wait for discussion.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve superintendent to hire certified faculty over the summer?
Make a motion to approve the superintendent to hire certified faculty over the summer?
Motion by Brian, a second for discussion. Ed, discussion. Back to you Brian.
How many spots do we currently have open that you'll be looking at?
Three right now, adjustment council, life schools, artistic program teacher, all have interviews lined up, ready to go, but through.
So it's just the three?
Just the three, as we stand. I will obviously inform you of the decision in September's meeting, so if it's been hired.
Did you get a good response to, I'm assuming these were posted, problem-sized?
Yep, artistic program, we had about ten applicants, life schools program just posted, you'll see that because of the next information item, because of the transfer, so that's up and so there are some candidates coming in there. Artistic program we had open, we were looking at that with preschool, we reopened it and we continue to get that.
Thank you.
So we'll do a methodical march through that when the September meeting.
I'll give that all to you.
Yeah, so we'll do that line by line so that all of you in the community is informed of what those hires were. All right, we are on, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, we got the discussion, thanks for the nudge. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Make yourself like a visual cue, so. Next is information items. Summer meeting is August 7th at two thousand, at seven PM at the Town Hall and we're going to have the few-minute window to be able to talk to that community, I'll be there, the board is certainly welcome, Russ and I will be there, Kelly.
Is it a board meeting?
It's not our board.
No, it's, yeah, it's a, yep, to Summertown meeting tradition. So a couple of us will be there, everybody on the board is welcome. Wanted to give you a brief update, there's full minutes in the packet, the SCES Facility Committee met, we've met a couple of times. It's interesting as a fairly new person in town that we were looking at drawings from, I think the one that we were looking at the most was 2014 or 2000, I mean, 2004 or 2006. So it was interesting to delve into all the history, looks like, you know, from what I've seen, read and talked to people, the discussion really started like twenty years ago, so it's very interesting to go through that. The committee, the board members for that, or Jim and I, we settled pretty quickly with feedback from everybody involved, there are a couple of different designs, there's things that we'll share at the August meeting, which is something I want to bring up in a second. But we really wanted to see what had been figured out before, what had been decided on, and a lot of looking through all the notes and the records and everything. What we really did is just, from the different designs before, I should very quickly settle on one that was designed many years ago and we asked for one minor change to that and that's, that's what's in process now, so there's been a lot of good work by folks currently and feedback and a good, healthy discussion. But it's interesting to walk into that with documents that are, you know, fifteen, twenty years old and get up to speed on all of that. So do you want to add any comment to that, just to share with folks?
No, I just think that even though those drawings are from 2006, they're still fresh, which is, which is interesting and I'm glad to be a part of that board and that discussion. To me, it's fun, it's moving forward, it's ideas, it's making things better, it's being a part of something that's good and the board works well together. Thanks for working with Jody and I do look forward to those meetings, I really do, I like them, I know, but next week, right, so, no, it's good stuff, it's good dialogue and it's positive and it's moving forward, which is nice.
So one of the things we want to do is on the 22nd, you know, of August, we want to, and you know, we'll announce this, but we want to have a meeting for the community, so we encourage folks that are here to share that with other people in the community. And just again, as a new board chair and a fairly new resident, I'd love the community's help finding all the different people over all the different years that worked on it before, because they're coming back to see what they've already done, we're not starting with something new, we don't have a dream list, a wish list, we're very practical, what is, what needs to happen and how can we address it. So it'd be great if folks in the community, that if you were involved before, that you can reach out to me, we can include you in the, invite you to the meetings, but particularly for the whole community, we'd like to get, it's not going to be a school board meeting, it's going to be a meeting at the school on the 22nd of August, just to talk about it, give some history, help educate the community as to where we are and why we've made the selection that we have and we'll have a lot more information and pricing and things like that at that point. So if you can leverage the goodwill of the community, that's going to be with the non-August 22nd at the elementary school. We have the graduation coming up next Friday at six PM in the gym. Excited to see people do the march and the family celebrating. Next item, item D, I just wanted to just have Russ speak, you know, briefly to, with some of the different things in the news lately, there's been questions and just sort of general concern even among younger students about the safety of schools, schools in general, our schools, so I just wanted to just reiterate some of the information from last year that was in meeting packets and just sort of refresh that, if I could defer to you for the, you know, the award and the plan and everything.
Sure. Obviously, one of the things, one of my responsibilities is looking at the safety of the welfare of the students and faculty in our buildings and I know, I share that and the principals share that concern with me every day. First and foremost on our line is making sure that people go home the way they came to us. So we've done a revamp of our plans, we've worked with Homeland Security Committee to evaluate our sites. You heard last year, we have money, received money from the state to redo our entrance ways for safety concerns. We had an emergency evacuation, offsite evacuation, we changed our offsite evacuation plan down the road from the highway garage down to London. We did an active shooter drill last year with Homeland Security, LOPD. From there, we were able to make some changes, continue to make changes to our emergency management plan, so it is something we take seriously. From those efforts, we were recognized as a, as a school, New Hampshire school of emergency preparedness last year from the Department of Homeland Security and New Hampshire State Schools.
Yeah, so just with the recent events, it's not new information and we talked about it at length last year, but we just wanted to let the community. last year. But we just wanted to let the community, reflect the community questions and concerns, and just bring that front center again. And that would be in the minutes in the discussion today. So thanks for the.
Do you have time for one quick question?
Please.
So the front entrance way the high school was redone. I walked this the way I came through. It's impressive. But we have two windows that are not bulletproof glass.
Into the, in the cab.
Yes. And the door. So is there, is there, is this the first step of a two-step process, or?
It is. We're looking at what we can do with that. One of the things, because we don't, one of the things we wanna be very careful of is we are very concerned with safety. We don't wanna institutionalize. This is under criminal soliciting, right? We're looking at some other modifications that can be made there.
Okay. Okay, good. The, the door and the glass into the office is wonderful, but it's not.
Right. It's still, there's still another action part.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Sir.
So are you looking to do that same renovation to other exits and entrances in the school as well, the side one over towards the baseball field?
Sure. So all our entrances during the day are locked. So you have to have a key slot to get in to have to be a teacher, or you would have to have a physical key, or a couple of those utilities with you. So most of those, all of those doors are locked and secured during the daytime. So what the, really our concern is on main entrance where people come in and out. And just trying to make sure we can control that flow of people entering and exiting out of them.
Any questions or comments? All right. Thanks. I just wanted to bring that up and have the, share that with the community. Next information item is Amanda Hughlock is going to transfer to preschool?
So Amanda Hughlock is our high skills teacher. I'm just letting you know that we are transferring her to preschool room.
So she'll have a different role?
She'll have a different role.
Yeah. Thank you. The middle high school front roof quotes, this is a topic at last.
To, to in your packet and deferred there.
This is a topic at the last meeting. Catch people up to speed if you didn't see the minutes or attend the meeting. We were questioning the, that some of them are falling off, and it doesn't look very good, frankly. There's no, and I understand there's no water damage yet, but there clearly is something relating to repair that's gonna have to be addressed at some point. So that's, the board feels that's a fair summary that gets us to this point here. So if you wanna talk about the.
So again, there's a cosmetic piece to it, but I mentioned the structural pieces. As you explained, Jesse, you've asked me to take a look at that. I looked at it about five years ago. I had Matt take some, get some quotes. And it's an expensive piece of roofing, and they range anywhere from thirty-two thousand to thirty-five thousand. And that's just to take the roof that's there, remove it, replace it. We can't put a metal roof there, given where it is, and the safety concern of snow coming off there would get to coming in. So we do have, you have options. I guess I'll finish that. You have options as far as if you'd like to go ahead with the project, you could pull money from your school facility account, which has about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars in it. You have a roof account that's up to about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And you could also say, we're projecting somewhere between a one fifty and a one fifty thousand dollar fund balance. You could instruct me to take it from there as well. So you have a few different options if you chose to do the work at this time.
So this is the information. Also, what questions, concerns, and comments do you have for discussion?
So there was two estimates?
Three. There's three. There's two in your packet. Your capital roofing in your packet and exterior, and then I just need you to do the output.
Have you noticed much of an increase from like that five years ago in the past?
Yeah, so the discussion we had before was, at some point, it's gonna affect the structure. So it's not just that it's a roof that's outside of the building. So beyond, aside from pride and, you know, cosmetic appeal or not appeal, at some point, that structure's gonna be impacted. So it is, it is a looming responsibility to address it. It was a little disheartening that the quotes came back as high as, for me, as high as it did.
I read it. I thought they were high, but I mean, yeah.
But they're all consistent. You know, there isn't, there isn't one that's, yeah, it's.
So the two, the two quotes, so again, if you, if you'd like me to be transparent. Thirty-two, five, thirty-four, four-six-nine, and thirty-four-nine.
Thirty-nine. They're all, they're all right in line with each other.
Well, I'd like to see the work it done.
Yeah.
And the structural load is gonna start to get damaged. And the cost is very gone up since they lasted that five years ago. It's just gonna go up five years.
Into condition, but it ain't gonna get worse. It's not gonna get better.
Yeah, and then, you know, Matt said some of them are coming out. And so then that's only gonna accelerate it. So it's not something that, you know, it's something that's a little frustrating that.
Like Ed said, if Russ is just gonna go out, it's not.
Keeps creeping.
It's not gonna give you a new three years from now.
So we have, we have fund balances to, we, you know, we have, we've done some saving, but when we have to address things like this, like we have last meeting talking about getting the roof checked and everything. So what are your, what do you guys wanna do for, for action? Do you wanna take action? And if you do, where do you wanna, where do you feel best about the funds coming from? Because we have a few options.
Did Matt offer an opinion on which quote provide the best?
He's been working with Tamiya, and they're doing some flat roof stuff for us this year as well.
What kind of work did you lay off? I don't see that on the page.
So all these came, they were talking about at least a thirty-year, but they're actually talking down, and thirty years seems, seems more reasonable. But I'm talking to shingles now, potentially going up to fifty years with this new technology. The technology's moving.
I don't. Tell that to the town as we tear off the safety services building.
Right, right, right. So the job itself, you can see it was covered on the, the, twenty-year workmanship on warranty.
So it's gonna have to be done. So it's a matter of when. If we wait, it's gonna be more expensive. I'm trying to summarize the comments. And then we have a couple different ways that we could pay for it. Does somebody wanna?
Who makes the determination which company does it? Is that this board here, or is that?
You, you would. They would direct me to, sure, you could, you could ask me to select one of these companies and have Matt continue to do research and look at, because of prices, so look at where our best warranty is. And most of those would be a major warranty on that shingle.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we definitely should do it. Personally, I do. And I would wanna make sure, I don't wanna go, I'm gonna let's do it. And I don't know what, which one we're doing, because I'm all about the quality and the longevity of what we're gonna get, the best service for the dollar and the taxpayer.
Yeah, and I'm approaching this as deferring to Matt, who's owns every responsibility, and to Russ for, for us to, for them to make that decision who they're actually gonna partner with.
Are we done with that at that point? Would Matt do that, and then Russ, like, once we've loaned us?
Yeah. So what I, so if you gave me permission to spend up to thirty-five thousand dollars to repair that roof, what I would tell Matt is go back and talk to these companies and give me the list of what their main effect on warranties looks like, what their warranty on scale, their insurance, all those different pieces. And then sit and have that conversation with him. I may even ask him if he knows of a, of a fourth company out there potentially, that he feels he could go get. But again, he's gone to four companies. He got three bids back. Four of the companies didn't even bid.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Russ.
Sure. How about testimonials from, would he?
He would, he would get references.
Yeah, references need follow-up. Because certainly, some of the quotes are more detailed and build a little bit more confidence than others.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I think, some of that, you might have got a, a cover, more of a cover page and not a lot of the detail. This came, Matt got it, we were waiting on it, so he gave you the whole thing.
Okay. Okay.
Ed, you had a question?
I was just gonna say, looking at the estimates, some of them seem to detail more product and.